Good evening, everybody. And welcome to our at-home audience. We welcome you to the school board meeting of the St. Louis Park School Board. Tonight, we're going to do a spotlight first, which is a little bit different. And what we will do is our new superintendent will introduce our new Director of Teaching and Learning, Carrie Ross. And so, Rob will take it from here. Welcome, Carrie.
Come on up, Carrie. Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to have this opportunity to introduce to you our new Director of Teaching and Learning, Carrie Ross. Carrie comes from the Department of Education. She was the reading specialist at the Minnesota Department of Education, which was a great fit, very knowledgeable in that area, has been all over the state. I think she'll tell you a little bit about that, helping schools improve. So, we're very happy to have her here. She was also before that a building leader and a teacher in the Centennial School District. So, I'd like to introduce Carrie and ask her to say a couple of words.
Thank you. It's great to be here. Thank you for the nice warm welcome. It's been wonderful the last few weeks. I've had an opportunity to go around to all of the buildings and many of the events and meet community members and parents and teachers and kids. And it's just been a really warm welcome. It was really difficult to choose to leave my position at the State of Minnesota. I really enjoyed that. But as I often told people, I felt like I had a class size of 60,000, because there were 60,000 educators in the State of Minnesota. And I took that responsibility for helping them to heart. But I was looking for a home. And I really do think that I have found a home here in St. Louis Park. Everybody's been very welcoming, and it's a little bit more manageable than 60,000. So, I'm looking forward to digging in and getting to work. Thank you for the opportunity.
Carrie, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome home. And we are very glad to have you here. And you are needed and welcomed, and we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
At this time, I'll take a quick rundown the agenda. This is our call to order. We'll have the approval of the agenda. Open forum, if we have anybody for that tonight. The superintendent's report. We have a number of discussion items on our agenda tonight. The first item on the agenda, the Cargill Science Discussion, has actually been moved. One of the Cargill executives that we had a scheduling conflict, and therefore, we want the Cargill executives here because we really appreciate all they have done for us. So, we'll move that to a later evening. Next on the agenda will be the Annual Report on Curriculum Instruction and Student Achievement, the referendum update, policy development, first readings. And there are a number of policies we'll have first readings on tonight. The preliminary levy report, resolution to conduct business on Christopher Columbus Day. And then, we'll have a change in date for our November 11th meeting. In an oversight, we scheduled a board meeting on Veterans Day, and that is a holiday upon which we cannot meet. Next, we'll have the consent agenda, and then the action agenda, where we have four items to approve. And then, communications and transmittals, and then we'll adjourn. And I'll get that word out one of these days. At this time, I entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. Moved by Jim, second please. Second by Ken. Thank you both. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no. We have a 7-0 vote. Next item is open forum. Cindy, do we have anyone for open forum tonight? We have no one here for open forum tonight. And so, that takes us to the superintendent's report. Rob?
Thank you, Bruce. I have a quick update on the construction that's going on at Peter Hobart Elementary School. First of all, just to note that we're building two classrooms onto Peter Hobart Elementary School this fall. These two classrooms are not part of the referendum. Work goals, these are totally separate items. Quick update includes that all the permits for this work have now been finalized as of today. The contractor has been hired, and all the subcontractors have been hired. The subcontractors have submitted their plans to the architects for approval, and they are in the process of ordering supplies. If you've driven by Peter Hobart recently, you might have noticed that the contractor has put up fencing around Peter Hobart, and some initial work has begun removing some of the blacktop on the playground at Peter Hobart. We're told that the excavating equipment should be at Peter Hobart yet this week, and digging will have begun. I talked to the principal, Shelley Nielsen, today, and she told me that they had an excellent organizational meeting with the architects and all the people involved in the project, set up all the guidelines and the rules for how this work was going to take place. And they're going to have regular meetings every Wednesday at Peter Hobart with everyone involved in the construction project to just make sure everything goes smoothly. So, the big news from Peter Hobart is that the digging will begin yet this week, and the work that people see will be underway. There's been a lot of work the last couple of months in the background, getting everything ready, kind of out of public view, but now the work that people will notice is starting to begin.
I just had a question about that, Rob. Because we haven't seen plans. Can you tell us where that, as well as you can describe it, where the additions going?
Yes. And Sandy, I see you there. Help me out here if I get this wrong. To me, it's the western side of the building, the playground side, that really it's just going to be extended. They're adding two classrooms on that side. It's going to take a little bit of the playground away.
So, behind the kindergarten, behind that, on the west side, but behind the new, the other addition, we did the kindergarten wing?
Yes, I believe that's accurate.
And is that a two-story on there? I think it's a walk-up. So, are they going to have a two-story going on there, or is it a two?
Sandy, I believe it is a two-story. I know when I talked to the architects today, they were talking about rebuilding some of the stairwells as well on that side of the building. If the referendum passes and if we are able to add on more to Peter Hobart, it would, some of the additions would continue right where these two classrooms are going to be. They would be built right onto that same portion of the building.
Okay, moving right along then. Next is the Annual Report on Curriculum Instruction and Student Achievement. This discussion will be led by Prachi, Sarah, and Carrie.
I think Mr. Metz is going to kick us off and just do a brief introduction, and then we'll head into some data.
I was just going to do a little kickoff here and let you know that this report, which is required every year by the Department of Education in Minnesota, is changing. This will actually be the last year that this report will be required, and it's going to be changing. I was part of a conference call with the Commissioner of Education this past week, and it was very interesting. The hope of the Department of Education is that the new report that's coming down the line will fit in a little more tightly with each individual school's strategic plan. And so, that this report and the strategic plan will really be one and the same. So, some changes in store. It makes very good sense. And the commissioner told the superintendents on the conference call that more information will be coming as the year progresses. So, think of this as the last time you're going to see this report. Next time, next year at this time, it'll look quite different.
Good evening, board members and everyone else. So, with respect to the Annual Report on Curriculum Instruction and Student Achievement, I'm going to speak to the student achievement part. We use a number of assessments to look at how our students are learning and performing. And one of the most important ones, the most widely used ones that we use is called MAP, or Measures of Academic Progress, published by NWEA. And teachers, principals, and the district staff use this data to look at student growth over time and set individual achievement goals. Because MAP provides us with what growth we can expect based on student starting scores. And so, we look at that to see if students are making a year's growth or not. It helps us monitor the progress of all students towards standards because the test is aligned with math and reading arts standards that we have implemented in the district. And so, we give the MAP in reading and math across grade levels, but different grade levels do it at different times, either fall-spring or spring-spring. And then, we also use the data to determine student eligibility for different kinds of instructional settings, whether they be advanced courses or remediation courses or interventions that are temporary. So, this chart here looks at three years of data, 2011, '12, and '13. These are all spring data, and these are data from students who were present for at least two testing seasons, either fall-spring or spring-spring. And on the left-hand side, you can see the different grade levels, going from grade two all the way to grade nine. And grade nine does not have 2011 data because they started using it with all ninth-grade students only in 2012. And then, for every year, you'll see three sets of bars, and every bar represents the percentile score that corresponds to the median score for the students in that group. So, for example, looking at the bottom-most bar, you see third grade, second grade, students who took both the fall and the spring test. The median score ended up having a percentile rank of 54, which is one way of saying that our average student was at the 54th rank when put in the national sample of NWEA MAP students. So, 50 is considered the median for the national sample. And anytime our students' average scores exceed 50, it shows that we're exceeding the national average by that much. And as you can see, the solid line down the middle of 50, all our bars exceed that score. And usually, in the high 60s or 70s. I'm not going to read out the scores to you, but you can see the numbers in the copy that you have in front of you. And this demonstrates that our students are performing above the national average when you think of the national average as the NWEA sample average. Yes?
I don't know if I missed this or not, but is it, what's the highest? Is the highest 100?
99, because these are, yeah, percentile ranks. So, one way of thinking about it would be if you look at grade seven, spring-spring, 2013, 73 is the percentile rank. So, our average student did better than 73% of NWEA seventh-grade students in the national sample in the spring in seventh grade. This data is displayed in the same manner as the last slide, except that this is for reading this time. And again, you can see that our students perform better than the national average, the 50th percentile rank, in all instances. And usually, in the high 60s or 70s for percentile ranks, doing better than 65-plus or 70-plus percent of students nationally. So, besides the MAP tests, another set of tests that affect a large number of students are the state tests, and we are required to administer these tests in reading and math every spring. So, in 2013, we had a change with reading tests, and therefore, the 2013 results cannot be compared with previous years. And 2013 data should be considered baseline data. The tests in 2013 were new tests because they had to align with the Common Core Language Arts Standards that were adopted by Minnesota in 2010. Now, these tests were more rigorous in keeping with the higher expectations in the new standards. The new Common Core Language Arts Standards are really a completely different world compared to our past standards because they are internationally benchmarked and research-based, and they're aligned with college and career readiness. So, they really demand a different set of, they have a different set of expectations from our students. And all I'll say is that we compare ourselves to the state. One of our points of comparison is against the state. And for 2013, because we cannot compare with previous years, we look at how we compared with respect to the state, and we see that we performed better than the state at every grade level. And what you're looking at are results for students who were enrolled on October 1 and were present by springtime to take the test. These results are for all students. And of course, we also look at students by different student groups, by race and ethnicity, and students in different programs. We are required to disaggregate data and look at that. Moving on to the math state tests, here we have three years of data, 2011, '12, and '13, district-wide by grade level, as well statewide by grade level. And here, you'll notice that for 2013, we typically are ahead of the state, but for 2013, we slipped behind the state or were very close to the state. And this is something that is of great concern to us. We want our students to be performing at their highest levels. And because of these results, we have been, schools have been, and we at the district have been looking at this data, trying to understand what the problem is, where do we need to be focusing and making changes so that our students are able to perform and achieve much higher than what we're seeing for 2013. And we have a team approach, so everyone is involved in understanding and providing input into how we came to this place. And we are confident that we'll be able to address this, make the changes that we need to make in order to see better student performance.
Prachi, there was a change in the testing procedure options. In the 2012, you could have taken, I believe, the math test multiple times and taken the highest score. And this year, it was the one shot. Did we take advantage of that the previous year? I don't recall.
Yes, the previous year, we had taken advantage of it, but only at the middle school. It wasn't district-wide. That option wasn't available to 11th grade, and we didn't take advantage of it throughout the district.
Because a lot of scores went down in math statewide, not in every district, but in many.
You're right.
Many are attributing it to that, but I don't know.
You're right. That was the only year where you could take the test up to three times, and only the best score would be retained. But for many obvious reasons, that cannot be continued. Because if you're measuring growth, you cannot have a student who took the test in January being compared with the student who took the test in April, and you know, and then the following year. So, right now, as it stands, you can only take the test once in the, you have to take the test once in the spring, and that score will count. Any other questions? Now, as you might, may or may not remember, the state got a waiver for ESEA in 2012 spring. And as a result of that, we now have something called the Multiple Measurement Rating. And this is expressed as a percentage score for every school. The district is not rated. It's only the schools that are. And there are, basically, there are four multiple measurements that form this rating. The first one is around annual proficiency, just like we used to have in adequate yearly progress. So, these proficiency targets are set for reading and math. And the targets are based on closing the achievement gap in half by 2017, based on where that student group was in a particular grade level and content in 2011. Then, the next piece of this multiple measurement is growth, our students making growth. And this concept of growth is similar to what we have for MAP tests, in that a growth score estimate is generated based on all the students with a starting score. And then, we look at where did they end up next year? And did they meet their growth target, or are they above or below growth target? And then, every school gets a growth score based on an average of all their students' The third component is closing the achievement gap, and it's really the first time that the achievement gap is addressed directly by the state. And in this one, what's looked at is, at a particular school, all student groups that are part of the calculation for proficiency, for any student group, their growth is compared to the state's highest-performing comparison group. So, for example, our black students' performance will be compared against statewide white students' performance. And depending on how much you've closed the gap, you generate points. And students in programs, special programs such as English as a Second Language, Free and Reduced Lunch, and Special Ed, are also compared with students who are not in those And the last component applies only to our high school because it has to do with graduation rate. And the target is 85% or an improvement. The other change with graduation rate is that four, five, and six-year graduation rates are now calculated. And graduation rates always refer to the previous year. So, although MMR reports haven't yet been published, they'll become public on 1st October. We do know that our graduation rates, for our graduation rates, we have the second-highest graduation rate in the state for black students after South Washington County. And it was a close second, because I think South Washington was at 80%, and ours was 76, 77%. Rob, do you remember? Very close. So, we know one piece of that rating for the high school will be very good.
For graduation rates, they're usually using year-old data, so they're using the 2012.
Yes.
And is that, those numbers are the 2012 that they'll use for calculating the graduation rate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, there's a five graduation rate. Is it a, in four years, or is just whoever achieves the requisite credits, or how's that measured?
The four, five, and six-year calculation, is that what you're asking about?
When they're saying what your percentage is, your graduation rate?
They're looking at how many students enrolled, ninth grade, how many students transferred out or dropped out, and then, four years later, five years later, or six years later, how many students graduated or transferred. And if they transfer to another school, and we have that information, then it, that data goes to that other school. But if it don't, I mean, there's a long list of codes. And if you're missing information, then that kind of counts against us because that students is, the student will be counted as a dropout.
So, they're taking all the kids you can't account for who didn't graduate in four, or five, or six years, and you get, but six years is the max, then, if it went for a kid?
Yes. Yeah. So, that's a more realistic look at how some students do take longer. So, that's a new addition, that the five and six-year rates are also calculated.
I have a question more about the 50% improvement that you mentioned earlier. So, on that 50% improvement, you said, does that follow the grade, that class that is moving through, or is it the grade improves by 50% over five years, or by 2015?
2017? Oh, I think you're, because for a moment, I thought I didn't understand, but I know what you're talking about now. So, let's say third grade, reading in 2011, for all students, 50% of the students were proficient. Then, by 2017, 25% more students have to be proficient.
In third grade?
In third grade, yes. Not the same students, third grade, yes. If there are no more questions, then I'm going to turn it over to Carrie, who'll talk about, more about the curriculum and instruction side of this report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board and community members, using that information that Prachi just shared with you, we have some work to do, some opportunities ahead of us. And one of our great opportunities this year, knowing that we have some strategic planning to do for the report next year, is to really take a look at the goals that we've set forth in the past, particularly last year, and how we achieved those goals, or if we didn't achieve those goals, what were some of the factors that were included in that. So, we've set some broad goals to start with this year, and can provide some regular input for you as to how we are making progress on these goals. We have two to present for you tonight. The first goal being increasing student achievement. And the first process to doing that would be to better align our instructional goals and objectives with the academic standards that our students are measured on, and that we are held accountable for delivering in our classrooms across the district. So, we'll be actively working on that on many fronts this year, at the school level, at the classroom level, and at the district level. And our other goal, then, is, based on the work that we will be starting in the first goal, is to develop common understandings of what rigorous expectations mean for all of our students, that we have some commonality, and we aren't surprised when students don't achieve what we hope that they would achieve. We're going to be providing some instructional supports and looking at our system, from the classroom to intervention practices, to the information we use to place students in support classes, so that we are being very intentional and purposeful. Because it's truly, as I think you would agree, important that all students have opportunities to participate in active learning environments that offer clear and facilitated instruction aligned to our expectations. So, we are starting there. We'll provide more information and more specific information as we go. When the MMR data comes in and our fall assessment data comes in, we will be gathering together as a teaching and learning team to be more specific about what our next steps might be. Looks like you're going to ask a question.
Yep, I have a question. On your goal too, to, how, do you have a vision on how that would be done more than just the in-classroom assessments? So, more of a...
We also can do that through professional learning. We had a meeting last week with professional learning representatives from every site across the district. And one of the things that we're discovering is we often say the same things, but we mean something different from school to school and program to program. So, one of our goals this year is to understand what everybody means when they use a certain term. Let's say, response to instruction. What does that mean? What are the things that we all have in common, and what are the things that we add on top of that from site to site to make that system relevant to the needs of our students? So, we all start with the same basis of understanding, and we all have a common understanding of what the standards expect of our kids. It's not uncommon that we don't have a definition of rigor. What does rigor look like? And that's something that we can develop through professional learning, through instructional leadership, and through classroom assessments and looking at student work. And we've got lots of possibilities to add to that picture. So, with that, we have a clear understanding of what that is and examples to support that.
Okay. So, you start with all the instructors having a common goal, a common understanding, and then move to a common goal, which would be the standards. After, would the standard be the goal, or would something higher than the standard be the goal?
That's an excellent question. Oftentimes, we think the standards are the goal, but actually, standards are the minimum expectations we have for students. So, it's really a matter of knowing what So it's really a matter of knowing what it's going to take to ensure that all students achieve that expectation and then what the next step is after they've done that.
Yes, because you mentioned excellence, so, and when you go excellence, that's a lot higher.
It's a little bit more than the bottom line, yeah, right. Anymore? All right.
While we're on that, I was just going to comment, Carrie, you know, those two professional learning goals, but that one in particular, just so dovetail with our mission and our objectives. Our mission is that all students attain the highest level of achievement. And our objective is that all students be held to rigorous standards. And so I'm really pleased to hear that you're kind of drilling down into those, the mission and the objectives, and really helping make that happen.
Yes, absolutely, with more to come. Up next is Sarah Thompson.
Before you go, we really do welcome you here. Last year, when we missed the reading number comparison of our schools to the state, missed it by about three points. The good news is we've closed that gap a bit. The bad news is we're still behind in those scores and we're not happy about that.
Right.
We, and again, it's very close, but at the same time, we expect to perform better in those areas. And so we think this gives you a good baseline. We'll be watching those numbers, obviously, very carefully and...
Don't you mean math?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was the math. The reading, we creamed that one, we expect that. It is the math scores where we showed, year by year, in 2011, we beat at the state level. We fell below by a small bit and we closed that gap a bit this year. And we expect to flip it back the other way next year.
Right, nothing but opportunity this year.
That is a great opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you.
In St. Louis Park, we have a long tradition of not only sharing data with the community, but also sharing some really good news with the community. So we take the fabulous data that we have from Prachi and Carrie, information about our professional learning, and around it, we wrap all of the other good news and the good things that are going on in our districts. So I just want to share a few of those tidbits with you tonight. Community members will receive this publication in their mailboxes in October. So it's coming your way very soon, but this is a preview for the school board and for those watching tonight. So in typical form, you've seen this layout before, this is what it looks like. Watch forward in your mailboxes, it's coming your way very soon. We also have a new concept coming this year called School News Briefs. And so you will receive the big magazine in the fall as well as periodic postcards from the district with regular updates about what's going on. And some of the content we'll be highlighting this fall includes our very own school board chair, who's also elected as vice chair for the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, talking a little bit about our athletic conference change for next fall, as well as some of our programming. So you'll see that coming your way this fall. As well as, we wanted to highlight some of our programs. And this is a program that actually funnels through Lisa Green and our community education area, and this is Project SOAR. And so it's important, not only that we talk about our academic programs, but we hit on some of the other programs as well that are in our community and in our schools. Some of the data that Prachi represented tonight is also included. It's important to note that Prachi presented it to you in big form. We break it down into smaller charts, a little bit easier to digest for our community members. So you can watch for that as you go through the school news this fall. And you've heard from me on many topics related to this, and you'll hear from me in a little bit, but there will also be information about the referendum that will go out in this publication as just one more way we can share information with our voters about Election Day and that it's coming. And so with that, I'll just take any other questions that you have for the three of us about this publication as we head forward.
Sarah, I noticed that some of this stuff is out of date. I wasn't sure if they're just placeholders or...
Yeah, you'll notice, there's some interesting things about this report. You'll notice, Prachi made a note in her presentation that the MMR data isn't released until October 1st. This report has to be approved by you before October 1st. And so there are many places where we simply don't have the data yet. And so last year's data is included with a marker for us to put new information in there before we go to press.
I don't have any questions, but I just encourage our community to read this. You've pointed out several times to watch for it, to arrive. And I would encourage everybody to read it when it does arrive, because there's a lot of good information.
It's a great publication. We use it also throughout the school year. We always have extra copies on hand. So if you have friends or neighbors that are going to be moving to the community and would like to get additional copies, you can get additional copies from the district office. And it's also available as a full download from the district website.
We thank you.
Thank you, Chair Richardson.
Next item on the agenda is the referendum update. And Sarah will stay with us and present that.
I will, it's my pleasure to turn the page now and talk to you specifically about the referendum. We do have one, it's coming up on November 5th. It's a general election day. The board has approved three questions. We have a lot of different communications going on, but tonight, I wanted to focus on the primary one that's timely for this week. Later this week, in mailboxes, families will receive their first installment of School News Briefs, School News Briefs that I just talked about. What this is, is you just saw the big publication, magazine format. This is the large-scale postcard format that we are developing that will be sent out periodically based on timely issues, the first one being the referendum. And so what this does is lays out the questions, specifically what we're asking for, what the different questions mean, some of the language, the tax impact. But what I want to draw your attention to most importantly is we've set a series of public meetings. Let's see if I can zoom in. Nope, not so much. All right, I'll read them to you, it'll be more effective. Three different public meetings will be held. The first one is Monday, September 30th, that's a week from tonight, right here in Room C350 at the high school at 7:00 PM. This will include a presentation about the referendum and an opportunity for local residents to ask questions. So we encourage any and all community members to attend. The next one will be Wednesday, October 16th. We're holding this one at Lenox Community Center in the Craft Room at 10:00 AM. Again, we'll make a brief presentation and then allow community members to ask questions. And then, the third and final installment will be in this room on October 21st, 7:00 PM. And again, question and answer, as well as a presentation about the referendum. So that's the update for tonight, there's a lot of activities going on. District website is full of information about the questions. We're working on a tax calculator so you can put your household value in and exactly know exactly how many taxes you're going to be receiving, so. And Sandy will be up later on tonight to talk about some other taxes that we have in our district.
Actually, that was one of the questions I was going to have.
Okay.
Because some of the people I've been talking to, they were joking, or I was at one of the football things this weekend, and they were joking around, you're going to have to pay $68. And they said, no, not you, because you live the mansion. So, but it would be interesting to have that calculator for them to...
It's helpful, yeah.
...refer them to that, so they can see what it is.
Yeah, and it comes straight from our financial consultants. So they've got, you know, the latest information in terms of bond rates and things like that, so. We've had in the past, it's a great tool because it really personalizes the info.
So you'll let us know when?
I would think within the week.
Beautiful.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it, Sarah. Next item on the agenda is policy development first readings. We have a number of policies to address and our faithful Cynthia Bennett will address them for us.
Thank you, Chair Richardson. Each year, the Minnesota School Boards Association puts out a list, it doesn't vary from year to year since I have been joining it, of policies that they recommend school districts affirm, reaffirm, or revise on an annual basis. To start out this year, we're starting at the top of the list with the 100 series. Policy 102 is equal educational opportunity. The next 200 series, 214, out-of-state travel by school board. And 401, in the 400 series, equal employment opportunity. Now, the school district has many more policies in each one of these series, 100, 200, et cetera, but this is the beginning of the set of the mandated policies from the School Board Association that we're asking you to review as a first reading.
Any questions, Julie?
Are we actually required to adopt these each year? Or is it just, you used different language this time, recommended that we review these policies.
We have a policy on policies, we do. And, but the School Board Association, their language this year on the website said "recommended." So we're following past practice that we brought them to you every year. I can find out absolutely if we're required, if you'd like me to.
You know, I think it's, there's some value for us to look at these, and these are ones that are not changing year to year. So I don't think there's any issue. It just struck me that I don't think my employer does this on an annual basis and is governed by the same statutes that, or a lot of the same statutes, the Human Rights Act and that. So, I don't know, it doesn't hurt us to do it, they're certainly important policies.
I will call MSBA to find out exactly what the requirement is.
Well, and I guess the question would be, are we hitting them on a regular rotation? You know, I don't think we do them all, clearly, we don't do all our policies annually.
We are remiss in a lot of our policy review. Last year, we had some, we had a few issues that we did not get, we did not get through this series. We also did not get through our own series of quarterly review of all of our policies. So we are behind and remiss, and we're really going to try to catch up this year.
That'll suck.
Any other questions for Cindy?
If I may add, that I will have to have an ask-for-a-limit of how many policies you'd like to see each meeting because we might have to add them at the study session and the business meeting to get them all in this year rather than just one meeting a month. So I'll look for the board's guidance on that also.
So my recollection on the, I thought the policy of policies, I thought it was a three-year cycle, you get through them all, but I know there's some that you have to look at every year, like the Vento, McKinney-Vento bill, and, yep, and there's more than that, I know. So I don't, so when you say to get through them all this year, are you saying the ones that we missed that are on our three-year cycle, or...
I'm referring to both. I'll get definite answer from MSBA about, are we required to go through this annual list by law or statute, or is it just recommended? And then, bring that answer back to you, and then we'll get moving on our three-year cycle. Because since I've been here, we have not made it all the way through either cycle.
Thank you, Cindy.
So is the intent that this is sort of like the first reading and they're going to come up again to be voted on at the next meeting? Or is this just, typically, that's what we've done, is that the plan?
Yep, I have these for a first reading tonight, and then they'll come back the next meeting for a second. And then, our next meeting, the end of this month, I'll bring back more new ones for a first reading.
And just on a substance point for the home audience, what we're looking at here is the equal educational opportunity, at least the two I want to talk about, and the equal employment opportunity. And I just want everybody to know that it is our policy that it is unlawful to discriminate on the basis of race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, marital status, parental status, status with regard to public assistance, disability, sexual orientation, or age. It's a very inclusive list, we mean it, we honor it. We have the policy in place, both for education and for employment. And we know that our staff works hard to make sure that the policies get followed.
Next item on the agenda is the preliminary levy report, and Sandy Salin will present that.
Good evening. Every year by September 30th, we have to bring before the board a preliminary levy certification for the board to approve. And what we are going to be asking the board to approve is the levy, the preliminary levy certification to the maximum. We will have an opportunity then, come December, to actually bring the final levy certification to the board for final approval, which will reflect the absolute amounts. Right now, what I'm going to go through for the board, however, is a worksheet that shows at this point in time what the state has calculated, which I don't anticipate too many changes to occur, but the state is still working on finalizing this levy and things sometimes change slightly. But at least this will give an idea of where we're at. And that's why we are recommending that the board approve to the maximum so that if, in case there's any other changes that the state's going to be making, we can capture those dollars. And hopefully, the viewing audience can see this. There was a lot of legislative changes that occurred this year with our levy certification. And I'm going to highlight some of the changes. And what this worksheet does is it compares what we have to certify for payable 2014, which is the current year, to what we had to certify last year under payable 13 and the increases and decreases that existed. And looking at the operating referendum and the location equity, that was the biggest change that occurred in legislation this year. Normally, how our operating referendum has been calculated, it's been calculated based on resident pupil units, which is those pupils that live within our district boundaries. What they changed this year is that it's actually going to be calculated based on adjusted pupil units. So it doesn't matter whether they're residents within our district boundaries or not, it's going to be based on an adjusted pupil weight. Also, another change that occurred, it used to be that our operating referendum was calculated based on a capped amount, which was capped, I believe it was, back in 1994. And there's been a lot of changes in legislation to this calculation throughout the years where the uncapped amount actually became quite a bit larger than what our cap was. And what they did with the calculation for the operating referendum, as well as you see down the third line, the location equity, they put it together and really, the calculation is looking at the uncapped revenue. So it gives us a little bit more revenue than what we had in the past, the way they're calculating it now. And that happened through legislative changes. But as you can see, that location equity is now taken out of the operating referendum and put on a line of its own. That was another legislative change that occurred. And basically, what they did is they took $424 per adjusted pupil unit out of the referendum revenue and put it in another designated levy called location equity. So there was a lot of changes. It did provide us with additional levy authority between the two. And it's just a legislative change that occurred. And hopefully, this will continue. Also, if you go down to the operating capital, and there's a new levy called student achievement, there was changes where they added a student achievement levy with new legislation. And it was supposed to be offset, for the most part, which it was for our district, by operating capital. What they did is between the levy and aid portion, we get more of an aid portion now versus a levy. And that was supposed to be done to counter that student achievement levy on the taxpayers. And looking down, another one that I'm going to mention is the health and safety. That's one of those items where, or line items where we always have adjustments from prior years. We always make estimates based on projects that we think are going to happen for the following year that don't necessarily happen. And what happened during this year's levy certification is there was a lot of negative adjustments for projects that didn't happen for prior years. So that's why you're going to see a considerable decrease in the health and safety levy for those. But the same amount of projects are happening for this year, it's just that for prior years, there's been a decrease because of the projects not being... It's just that for prior years, there's been a decrease because of the projects not being completed. So looking at the bottom line for the preliminary levy certification for the general fund, it's at 600, or 667,000, which is a 4.7% increase overall. And the majority of that increase had to do with the operating referendum and the location equity levy.
And those are all decisions made at the legislature? Or that they're not decisions that we, as a school board or district, made?
That's correct. That was all made with the new legislation. And going on to the community ed program, there really wasn't anything changed in the community ed program levy, pretty much comparable to the prior year, with the exception of the school age care, there was a slight increase in the levy. And what happens with that levy is we estimate, it's, we get a levy based on the expenditures that are spent for that program. And we estimate it best as we can in the year of the levy process. But the expenditures, you know, did go up slightly for the prior year, which it adjusts for in the next year's levy, which is what happened this current year. So there was a slight increase in that levy due to an increase in expenditures from prior year. But overall, the community ed program levies increased about 25,000, which is a 2.79% total Going to the debt service, the biggest change there, I mean, this debt service is used to pay off our bond principal and interest payments. And basically, what we do with debt service levy is we have the authority to levy 5% over those principal and interest payments for any additional expenditures that may occur for any new bond ventures or what have you. But what happens is they end up doing calculations at the state level and end up taking it back through what we call the debt service excess. So what you see there is, is decreases in the debt service levy. But there wasn't as much of a decrease as there was in the prior year. But basically, they're just taking that money back and, based on a calculation that the state does. And, and there was an increase in that levy because it wasn't as much of a decrease as the prior year. We also have the capital facilities bond, QZAB bonds, as well as the OPEB bonds. And they're basically the principal and interest. And, and as you noticed on the general fund, one thing I didn't notice is there's an offset for the QZAB bonds on the general fund side because basically, it's supposed to be a wash to us. And in grand total, there was an increase overall in all of our levies of 875,000, which is a 4% increase. And again, that was due to a lot of the new legislative actions that took place regarding the referendum revenue and the other revenues.
Does this include the decision we made at our last meeting about refinancing bonds in October?
No, this does not include that. And that will be included as, you know, as part of the process, when we go through the process and finalize that next month, then they'll continue on to the next levy certifications.
So that's the one decision we're making, and that will decrease it to some extent. We won't know precisely until those bonds are sold.
That's correct.
So is this updated information? The sheet that went with it seemed to indicate there was a decrease in the total.
And I'm sorry, I apologize. That was a, an error on my part. That was actually a increase.
Got it. And it should have been-
Same dollar amount, but it's an increase, not a decrease.
Same dollar. Well, I guess it's modified a little bit, the dollar amount. But also, it should, and that's for taxes payable in 2014, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Cindy, the one I have is, on the presentation on the first page, it said final levy certification.
It's preliminary.
This is preliminary?
Yes.
And it's just the title?
Yes.
And that is what we will vote on in the action part of our agenda.
Yes. What we're voting, what we're going to be asking the board to do on this preliminary levy certification is to levy to the maximum so we have the ability, in case there's any adjustments that the state still is going to be doing, to capture those funds. And then, when it comes to be December, we're going to bring the final levy certification to you, which will be the actual dollar amounts, which you will approve at that time.
Next item on the agenda is the resolution to conduct business on Christopher Columbus Day. And Director Yarosh will present this one.
We came across this one in talking about as we prepare, hopefully, for the Elliot closing. And the way the statute reads is that Christopher Columbus is a legal holiday, but you can opt out. And I guess by having a meeting on that day, it's kind of implicitly that you've opted out. But better form was to actually take a resolution that allows us to take action if we need to on Christopher Columbus Day. Unlike Veterans Day, the school board and the state, they don't have the option to opt out. And that is a holiday you must observe and cannot conduct public business on. So this is just saying, we realize that it's listed as a holiday, Christopher Columbus Day, but we are opting, officially opting out with the passage of this resolution.
And Jim, you were just talking about our, having a school board meeting and taking school board action because the schools are already scheduled to be meeting. And people, students are already going to be here on Columbus Day. This is just about the school board action, right?
Yeah. Official public action can't be taken on a holiday. And so this is a holiday unless you opt out.
It is, and can be opted out in every state except Rhode Island, where I happen to be from. And in Rhode Island, this is a, as far as they're concerned, it's a state holiday, as far as they're concerned, it is a national holiday. And it, and is due to ethnic backgrounds. And so it is just a wonderful time and also carries some very tough memories of my cross-country. We run a Columbus Day road race that day. And so if we were in Rhode Island, this would not be possible. Since we are in Minnesota, we will go ahead and conduct school business and conduct school on that day. But in Rhode Island, it is a, it is a holiday, and schools are closed. The next item, however, we cannot change. Jim, do you want to address the Veterans Day also? You, you mentioned it. Can you take this one also?
Yeah. Well, because you cannot conduct public business on a holiday, and Veterans Day is a holiday which you do not have the option to opt out of. And we had inadvertently scheduled a meeting on Veterans Day. We thought it best to change that meeting so we can then conduct business. So I think the proposal is to have it the next day, on Tuesday, the 12th.
And that is a change. And for those at home, to change your calendars, that there will not be a school board meeting that evening. We'll move the meeting to the following day, which is Tuesday, the 12th.
Assuming we vote that way.
Assuming we vote that way.
And I apologize. That was my error for missing that on the city school calendar, to not, to not schedule on Veterans Day. So that's my error. I apologize for that.
Ken, I just want to say something quickly in terms of both of these. I think it's worthwhile to note the difference between the way the board and many of the, probably every member in this room, learned about Christopher Columbus as a kid versus maybe the more true story of Christopher Columbus. I know, maybe we don't want to get that deep when we're talking about this particular action, but I think it's worth noting this evening, despite what our friends from Rhode Island say.
Had you said that in Rhode Island, you'd be in big trouble right now. At this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And we are looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Larry, second. Second by Jim. Any discussion? None appearing. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Okay, we have a 7-0 vote. Next is the action agenda. The first item on that is approval of the annual curriculum instruction and student achievement report. It is recommended that the school board approve the annual curriculum instruction and student achievement report as presented previously.
So moved.
Moved by Julie, second.
Second.
Second by Larry. Further discussion? Nancy?
Yeah, I intend to support this. This is what you were talking about, right? With the understanding that there'll be some further editing as you finalize the publication.
Thank you. Any other comments? None appearing. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Okay, we have a 7-0 vote. Next item is the preliminary level levy approval. It is recommended that the school board approve the 2013 preliminary levy as presented. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Larry, second. Second by Joe.
With, with an amendment, I believe it's the 2014 preliminary levy.
And everybody, secondary is comfortable with the amendment? Okay.
Convenient the original motion.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no. We have a 7-0 vote. Next is the approval of resolution to allow business on Columbus Day. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Joe, second.
Second.
Second by Nancy. Any further discussion? Barring any protest from people from Rhode Island, I, I support this. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no. 7-0 vote. And last item on the action agenda is the approval of the date change for a November 11th, 2013 meeting, which was Veterans Day, to Tuesday, November 12th, 2013. It is recommended that the board approve the date change for the study session of the school board to be held on November 12th, 2013, due to the observance of Veterans Day on November 11th. Motion to approve? Moved by Joe, second.
Second.
Second by Ken. Any further discussion? Nancy?
Yeah, I just want to note that I have a conflict on the 12th, just so you all know you'll be here and have a quorum.
Any other discussion points? On behalf of our veterans, we do honor them. And that is the reason we honor this day. And we greatly appreciate their service. Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Okay, 7-0 vote. Communications and transmittals. Joe?
In our packet this time, we got a postcard that says, if your child is three, it's time to call. It's for early childhood screening. I did this with my son last year, and I just want to say it's actually a great experience. The staff is wonderful with the kids, obviously, and, you know, just your normal sight and hearing test, and then playing a few games. So it's really kind of a, you know, a good experience for something that is just kind of routine. It actually works out really well. And I also want to mention on a separate note, sports note, that our very own St. Louis Park graduate, Mark Tressman, is now 3-0. And so now that St. Louis Park grads are undefeated in NFL coaching, I'm thinking that our very own Larry Shapiro will be the next Jacksonville Jaguars coach starting next year.
That shouldn't last too long.
That is, the, he coaches the Chicago Bears football team, which are a fantastic football team. But anyway, I did have a communications also. Thank you, Joe, for pointing out that the Chicago Bears are doing well. It is, it is fall, and there's a lot of kids going out and about on their fundraising. And so if we could, as a community, make sure we keep an active eye out for the kids that are walking around and trying to sell product or knocking on your door to ask for things. So just keep an active eye out there because they could use as much eyes out there as we can. And also contribute as you can. You seen that? That's it.
Julie?
I had the pleasure of watching the homecoming parade last Friday. And it is a lot of fun. It's a short parade, but it's packed with a lot of enthusiasm. And there's usually neighbors and parents out there, but there ought to be a few more people out there. And it was, I think we had the student council on the fire truck, if I recall. So the city participates. We, there was a fire truck. There were the homecoming court members. Orchestra was, had a large contingent out with a sign. I was so pleased to see the orchestra members out, along with their, their teacher was marching with them. Science Olympiad was there with a little float. And football, right? Ken was there marching with the football players, and younger guys, too. And there may have been somebody else. I think that's it.
Ultimate Frisbee.
Ultimate Frisbee. Must have been when I was trying to take a picture of the orchestra group or something. My, my daughter used to be in orchestra. Anyways, it was a fun parade, and I encourage everybody to come out and watch it again next year.
Thank you all. The, one item I have tonight is the Parktoberfest, which happens Saturday evening, October 5th. It is a fundraising event for the St. Louis Park Public Schools Foundation and for STEP. And for everything that STEP does for us and for the additional funding we receive from the Public Schools Foundation, we are very grateful. This is, for both of them, one of their major fundraisers of the year. And so I would like to encourage everyone, most of the board members here are signed up. It is a $100 donation. Half goes to STEP, half goes to the Public Schools Foundation. There will be great food. It will be filets. And if you don't want that, you, there, there also is a fish, I believe it's salmon, that evening, too. So if you're not into meat and you are into fish, you can do that. And while I hesitate to mention, mention it at a school board meeting, but these, is for adults. Therefore, there will be excellent wine and excellent beer. This will be held at the winery in St. Louis Park, which I had never been to before, which is just a really delightful venue. And so I think it'll be a great evening, a great evening of fun, a great evening to share with each other. And I encourage everyone to pay up, join up, and it goes to a great cause. And so that is Saturday, October 5th. If you go to the website of the St. Louis Park Public Schools Foundation, that's www.slppsf.org. There is a connection where you can sign up right there. And even if it happens that you can't go that evening, it's a great opportunity to give to both of these wonderful organizations. And we really appreciate everything that STEP and the foundation, everything that they do for our schools is greatly appreciated. Nancy?
Yeah, I'll just echo, you know, having gone for years to that, it's such a good time. So I just would encourage people to really, if you, if you've gone in the past, come again. If you haven't gone, check it out. It is a fun time to be with community members, to really socialize, to see each other. This year, we're back to having Jo and Dottie Zanner do the food, and they're fabulous. The food is fabulous when they do it. And I was at a grocery store this last weekend, and Dottie Zanner was right behind me getting her food because they were practicing that night. So, you know, this is going to be a wonderful meal and a good time. So that's on your calendar for October 5th at 6 o'clock. I believe on October 15th, the school board candidate forum by the legal woman voters is going to happen. That's October 15th. And I would just encourage people, more details as we get closer to it, but if you're going to get things on your calendar, that would be a time to either come or watch on cable because we have several people- come or watch on cable, because we have several people up for election, and it's really important to our community that we have informed voters. So I hope you'll mark that and plan to watch.
Last item on the agenda is adjournment. Move to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Jim, second.
Second.
Second by Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no. We have a 7-0 vote, and we are adjourned.